I see Mr. Lyden is already sitting down?
Yes, I am.
All right, so let me call this meeting to order. Grace, the recording is on?
Yes.
Okay, can you please read the statement?
Welcome to the public meeting of October 23, 2024 of the Township of Washington Planning Board. Adequate notice of the meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by the Board Secretary, who released two newspapers on January 15, 2024. And this meeting has been posted on Township Order Board, Electronic Message Board, WCTV, and on the township website.
Great, so let's all stand for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the holy, delicious sands, and the launching of a hundred thousand in the middle, the liberty of justice for all.
For all. Thank you. So I think we, this evening, we have a new member to appoint or to take the oath of office as a member of the Washington Township Planning Board. The new member was promoted by, was appointed by Mayor Kalamari. And I believe your name is Mike Palito, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, thank you, Lou. Can you issue the oath of office?
Sure, if you can raise your right hand and repeat it for me. I'm Michael Palito.
I'm Michael Palito.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
And I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
Perform all the duties of Planning Board Member Class 4.
Perform all the duties of Planning Board Member Class 4.
In the Township of Washington.
In the Township of Washington.
County Bergen.
County Bergen.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities to help me God.
According to the best of my abilities to help me God.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations. Mr. Palito, welcome to the board. Grace, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Palito.
Here.
Mr. Tool.
Here.
Mr. Toro is absent. Mr. Wojnarzki.
Here.
Councilman Almond.
Here.
Mayor Kalamari is absent. Chairman Savino.
Here.
Let the record be flat. Also in attendance are Attorney Muammar Matina, Board Engineer Fall Hazmanna, Board Planner Steve Lyden, and Board Secretary Grace King.
Thank you, Grace. Can you read the public portion?
To participate in the general public portion of the meeting, please click the link on the agenda below and on the website to determine what to want. You'll be asked to state your name for the record, and we'll ask that only one person speak at a time. This public comment portion is only for non-agenda items. Time is set aside later in the meeting to address questions or comments about current agendas. If you are participating in the meeting by phone, press star and I to raise your hand, and star six to unmute. At the end of the general public portion, no further general questions or comments will be accepted.
Okay, do we have a motion to open the public portion?
Motion to open.
Step again.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Grace, do we have anyone in the audience or on Zoom that would like to address the planning board on topics other than what's on the agenda for this evening?
We don't see any hand raised on Zoom, and no one in the audience is getting up to speak.
Okay, do we have a motion to close the public portion?
Don't move.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first agenda item is old business. The discussion of the draft commercial vehicle ordinance. Now, I believe Mr. Lyden is there in person. First of all, let me thank the planning board members who provided their comments to Grace last week. And in turn, Grace provided them to Mr. Lyden for an update of the draft. So, Mr. Lyden, I would like to turn the meeting over to you to provide us as to all of the process you went through to address all of the mayor and council's comments from, I think, about a month ago, in addition to the comments made at the board meeting about, I think, three weeks ago now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may recall that the Planning Board offered the governing body a draft ordinance to regulate the parking and storage of commercial vehicles in residential zones. And this draft ordinance included reasonable regulations relating to the parking and storage of commercial vehicles. Upon review by the governing body, it was requested that the Planning Board consider ways to harmonize the draft ordinance with an existing Chapter 330 that's already in the township code. It was also recognized that the Planning Board endorsed ordinance did not address the parking and storing of boats in residential zones. And it was suggested that perhaps this draft ordinance should be expanded to include boats. We had never included boats because they had never come up before. So what I've done is I've given another draft. I'm going to change the title of that draft to include boats and boat trailers. And then I've also included a definition for boat and a definition for boat trailer. And under Section 3, I've changed alphabetic on my copy to alphabetical order. So that's taken care of. But getting to Chapter 330, which I think Grace you may have distributed to board members, that's an old ordinance. And I think I've maybe came up with a reason why it really wasn't enforced. It came up with something called non-prohibited hours, which were from midnight to 6:00 in the morning. And that's when it regulated the storage and parking of commercial vehicles. Outside those prohibited hours, there weren't regulations. So at 6:01, a vehicle became legal, if you will. By the time the zoning officer got into town hall at 8:00, 8:30, 9:00 o'clock, whatever it is, they were fined. And when he left home at 5:00 o'clock, they were fined. And it wasn't until 12:01, let's say, that the ordinance became effective. So we were asked to harmonize the draft that we had presented to council with this ordinance. And the way I harmonized it, and certainly up to this board's endorsement or modification, depending on your opinions, and then up to the mayor and council for ultimate adoption, I took a lot of, I gave a lot of weight to the numbers in Section 330-4. Height in excess of eight feet, length in excess of 18 feet, width in excess of seven feet. And I looked at how those numbers matched with the ordinance, the draft ordinance that we recommended to mayor and council. My earlier proposal had a height allowed for a height of 10 feet. In an effort to harmonize without singing, I'm now recommending that we change the ordinance that we submit to council to eight feet. So we harmonize with the number that's in Chapter 330. The width in Chapter 330 was limited to seven feet. The earlier proposal we had submitted to council had a width of eight feet. I'm suggesting, again, in the effort of making harmonization between the existing ordinance and this draft, that we reduce the width to seven feet. Where I really struggled, however, was in length. Chapter 330 was prepared and modified in the mid-1980s. And without a doubt, trucks have gotten larger. All you have to do is look at a mid-80s Explorer, or Bronco for that matter, to see what trucks have become. So Chapter 330 had a limitation on length of 18 feet. Our earlier ordinance had a length of 23 feet. In an effort to maybe do a two-part harmony, I am now suggesting we limit the length of trucks to 20 feet. I think that's a reasonable dimension. A parking space is usually 18 feet long or 20 feet long, so it bears some resemblance to that. I've gotten away from the idea that there are prohibited hours where certain activities would be prohibited only during those hours. And the rest of the day, they would be okay. This ordinance would be effective around the clock. So then, so those are my changes for commercial vehicles. So they're relatively minor in scope. No prohibited hours, it's effective the whole day, and some changes in the widths. To boats, I added the definition of boat and boat trailers. And then on page 2 of the draft ordinance, which actually starts on 1, I say, under A, "No sailboat or motorboat or engine-powered boat greater in length than 18 feet shall be parked or stored on any residential lot in the township." And that, and this provision shall apply with equal force to covered boats, boats under tarps, or uncovered boats. And here's a distinction I think is notable. Human-powered boats without engines or motors, such as, and including rowboats, pedalboats, canoes, waterboards, and kayaks, are permitted to be stored in the rear yard of residential lots. Clearly, you know, you've got a lake in the middle of town, Washington Lake, to not allow for human-powered motorcraft or boats, I think, would be a mistake. Then, people with boats need to transport them and store them. So I said, "No boat trailer," and under B, "constructed to support or transport a boat greater in length than 18 feet shall be parked or stored on a residential regardless if a boat is on the trailer or not." So just like throwing a tarp over a boat doesn't make you exempt having an empty trailer doesn't make it from being prohibited to being prohibited, permitted. If it's over 18 feet in length, it would be prohibited. And then, what about the boats under 18 feet in length? Those would be allowed to be parked and/or stored on a residential lot. Every boat parked in a residential district shall be screened with fencing and/or landscape, with a dense year-round landscape buffer or fence or both. The height of such screening shall not be less than six feet at time of installation. And by that, I mean the installation of the fence or the planting of the vegetation. Fences shall be of a solid design and otherwise comply with all other applicable fence requirements. And such screening shall be designed to shield the boat from nearby residents. And then the next paragraph just deals with boat trailers. And it has the exact same language. Boat trailers of less than 18 feet can be stored on a residential lot, on a driveway. They do need to be screened by fencing or dense year-round landscape buffer. And then, the changes I made as far as the trucks is found on Page 2F, where we've changed, well, I've recommended, I didn't change anything. I recommended, we, in an effort to harmonize with the existing Chapter 330, those are the reduced width dimensions and heights. In other ways, the ordinance remains the way you saw it earlier and recommended to council. I did get some comments from board members, and I'll let the board members, of course, speak for themselves. I think I've incorporated those in this draft, but I guess we'll find out soon.
Okay, Mr. Lyden, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chairman.
All right, great. Thank you for your efforts in making modifications and incorporating my fellow board members' comments into this latest draft. So what I would like to do at this point in time is open up to the board members any additional comments they have on this draft.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start. Mr. Lyden, you incorporated everything from the old ordinance, except we left out the weight.
We, if I recall right, we left out the weight very early on.
Did we?
Yes, and that, there was some long discussion on that. And you're right, it is in Chapter 330, but based on the conversation and the input from the board, I thought we had already
Okay, that's my, I must have been looking at a very old draft. Okay, and then the other thing that I found interesting looking at this is we don't address anything with penalties like the old ordinance did.
That's correct.
So is that something that we should be looking into? Or is that something that is under the jurisdiction of the code official?
Well, I think the answer to that question is, Chapter 330 is not in the zoning ordinance. It was a separate standalone chapter. And so therefore, unless Lou tells me I'm wrong, which is very possible, they had to insert a penalty provision in that ordinance. But the zoning, so if someone is violating, if this gets adopted and someone violates it, they would be subject to the same penalties that are in the zoning ordinance, like if they put a swimming pool in their front yard, for instance. There are penalties in here. I forget what they are. They're usually monetary. And they come with the threat of jail typically. I don't think anyone's ever gone to jail for a zoning violation. And so if someone's to violate this, because this would become part of the zoning ordinance, it would be under the provisions of a violation of the zoning ordinance.
And Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, this board does not have the authority to implement any type of fines or penalties, correct? That's at the discretion of the mayor and council?
On implementing, what Mr. Lyden said is the zoning code itself has penalties in it for anybody of the zoning ordinance. So you don't include it in separate ordinances for parking, like criminals. Let's say harassing it, that would have its own penalties if it was a criminal statute. This is the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board members? None? Okay. Again, Mr. Lyden, thank you for your testimony this evening. Do we have a motion to open up public comments on the draft commercial vehicle ordinance? Do I have a motion?
A motion. A second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Grace, anyone in the audience or on Zoom that would like to comment on this draft commercial vehicle ordinance?
No. No comment, no questions.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public comments?
So moved.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, at this point, do I have a motion to approve the draft commercial vehicle ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion to indicate that the draft ordinance is consistent with the master plan. That's our role. So we're not adopting this ordinance. We're indicating it's consistent with the master plan. That's the motion.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve that this draft ordinance is consistent with the master plan?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Grace, roll call?
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Colito?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
Mr. Ward Teranowski?
Yes.
Councilman Coleman?
Yes.
Chairman Savino?
Yes.
Thanks. I will get Grace a new copy with alphabetical in Section 3 tomorrow morning.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lyden, and thank you to all the board members. I know we've vacillated over this draft ordinance now for months. So, thank you for your efforts, and Grace, can you get the latest draft over to over to the mayor and council?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lyden. Moving on to new business. The request of Cohen Development Group LLC, formerly Franklin Court Management LLC, to extend Resolution PB 24-09 amended, amended site approval for 781 Van Emberg Avenue, Block 1102, Lots 1.04, 2, 9, and 11, and Prop. Block 1102, Lots 1.05, and 9.01. Is the applicant in person at the Okay. So can the applicant please provide your name and your role as part of the extension?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jason Chircha. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a reporter, I'm just going to use her to do what she needs to. We can start.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jason Chircha, spelled C-H-E-R-C-H-I-A, from the law firm of Valens Goldman &amp; Spitzer in Woodbridge, New Jersey. I'm here tonight representing Cohen Development Group, which is the current owner of the properties in question that you listed at the start of this. We're here tonight seeking an extension under the MLUL of the planning board approvals of the amended resolution. That would be Resolution PB-22-09. Just to refresh the planning board's recollection, there was an initial approval and then an amended approval issued for the property, ultimately resulting in a subdivision that would create two new tax lots, one of which would be a single-family residence, the other of which would be a 44-unit inclusionary housing development. That would include seven affordable housing units, as well as a contribution by the property owner of $250,000 to the municipality's Affordable Housing Fund in lieu of building an additional two affordable housing units. So that approval, the amended approval, was issued, was adopted, approved by this board by way of a resolution dated December 7, 2022. And so, as board is aware, or coming up on the two-year expiration of protection from zoning ordinance changes that attaches under the MLUL to planning board approvals, final approvals by the planning board. We're seeking this extension pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-52A and 52D. 52A gives the board wide discretion, 52D, and it really imposes a balancing test relating to the public interest, and balancing that against any potential zoning ordinances and the interests of the developer in particular. Section, subsection D of that statute basically grants, requires the board to grant an extension in the event the board finds that the applicant has been moving diligently to secure all the necessary approvals prior to seeking building permits. We believe we satisfy both standards. I'll let Mr. Cohen, who's seated to my left, address what we've done so far to move towards building permits. Before I do that, I just want to address the sort of the uniqueness of this property, and that's that we are going to be contributing affordable housing units to the, that the township can claim credit for against its third round affordable housing obligation. As I'm sure the board is aware, and I'm sure Mr. Lyden is aware, that recently the fourth round numbers came out. So I'm sure everyone is thinking about affordable housing again, I know I am. In any event, the township filed a conclusionary housing, a declaratory judgment action in the Law Division. Franklin Court, who was the owner of the property at the time, intervened in that action. And eventually, it resulted in the proposal to develop the site, as I described before. That was a 44-unit building with the seven inclusionary housing units. Since that time, there was a settlement agreement with Franklin, between the township and Franklin Court that required a zoning change that would affect my client's property. That zoning change was ultimately implemented and was noted by the special master assigned to that declaratory judgment action as a condition of what ultimately came to be granted, which was the township's final judgment of compliance and repose, which in effect prevents the township from being subject to builder's remedies. And I point that out because that judgment and the special master's report and the settlement agreement were all premised on the fact that this property would be developed as approved in the most recent resolution, again, that's from December 7, 2022. The township has also amended, and this was done at the time of the inclusionary housing, excuse me, the declaratory judgment litigation. It's, the township amended its housing element, the housing element of its master plan, and again, that document as well references the seven units that the township is claiming credit for, for its affordable housing obligation. The one other thing I'll note about that is that the township has claimed a vacant land adjustment, which was granted, which is premised on the fact that there's no other developable land in the town. So in effect, my client's property is, remains available, was approved for inclusionary housing, and we believe that this extension is appropriate in order to preserve the status quo, which involves the construction of these units. That brings me to my last point, which is that we are not here seeking to change what was approved. We're still looking to do the subdivision as it was approved. We're looking to do the construction as it was approved. We're not looking to change anything about that. We just are looking to extend the protection from zoning ordinance changes. And that's what we're seeking relief for. That would, again, that just preserves the status quo in the event, whether intentional or unintentional, to zoning ordinance changes that may affect my client's ability to develop the property as approved. So by extending that protection, any ordinance, if that were to be granted tonight, any ordinance changes that come in within the next year, or really by December of 2025, would not affect this property, and the property could, and we anticipate by that time, will have gotten the necessary construction permits in order for the protection that attaches to no longer be necessary. With that, Mr. Cohen has a couple of things he'd like to point out as well related to what we've done so far to get to a point where we are prepared to seek building permits.
Does he need to be sworn in?
Sure. Raise your right hand if you agree with me, square to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help me God.
Start telling the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help me God. My name is Jonathan Cohen, J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N, Cohen, C-O-H-E-N. Good evening, members of the board. I represent Cohen Development Group, the developer of the approved 44-unit multifamily building located at 781 Van Emberg, along with the single-family home at Fillmore Court. As you may recall, this project was approved as part of a planning board application and a settlement agreement with the township, which includes seven affordable units within the multifamily building and a $250,000 contribution to the municipal affordable housing fund, which we paid following the issuance of the certificate of occupancy in accordance with that agreement. Our project received initial approval in February 2, 2022, with the amended approval on December 7, 2022. So this evening, I am respectfully requesting a one-year extension of this approval to preserve the zoning protection granted under the New Jersey law. We are not requesting any changes to the approvals with this extension request, everything is staying as approved. Since receiving these approvals, we've made substantial progress, but several external factors beyond our control have caused some delays in starting the construction. And I'll outline some of those key outstanding items today. First is the New Jersey DEP Treatment Works Approval Final Permit. We are waiting final approval from the NJDEP. In order to submit this application, we first needed to obtain the sewer connection approval from the Bergen County Utilities Authority, which we received on August 29 this year. Since filing our application for the TWA, we did receive administrative completion on October 9, 2024. So the final TWA approval is still pending. We expect the M to move forward now that all of these prerequisites are in place. Township bond estimates were required to post bonds with the municipality in conjunction with this planning approval. We're just waiting on the township engineer to provide the estimates, which are in progress. After recent conversations with Mr. Azalina, we expect them within the next week or so, at which point we'll move forward to secure the bond and post them. That usually takes a couple of weeks. The developer agreement, so the township requires a developer agreement before we can proceed with A subdivision finalization, B permitting, and of course, C construction. We received an initial draft from the township attorney on August 27, 2024. We have provided comments on September 17, 2024. So we're currently waiting on a reply from the township so that we can execute the agreement. We've been informed that the final draft will be sent over once the bond estimates are completed by the planning board engineer. Subdivision finalization and factuation. So both the township and the county approvals for the subdivision have already been secured. The township engineer, the process that the township engineers outlined requires that both the developer agreement be executed and the bonds be posted before signing the subdivision plaque. So once that's signed, it'll be circulated for signatures and perfected at the county clerk's office. So those are the open items. In terms of the progress that's been made and the approvals have been secured, so despite some of the delays I outlined, we've continued to secure necessary approvals as follows. In terms of the Bergen County Planning Board, we received county site plan approval on September 6, 2023. We received county subdivision approval on September 8, 2023. As part of the county approvals, we were required to post bonds with the county as well. County bonds have already been posted in September of '23. In terms of the Bergen County Utilities Authority, we received sewer connection approval, as previously mentioned, on August 29 of this year. In terms of the Bergen County Soil Conservation District, we received the Soil Conservation District approvals on May 16, 2023 for the single-family portion, and on June 2, 2023 for the multifamily portion. In terms of the NJDEP approvals, NJDEP approvals, including the wetlands LOI, were secured on February 25, 2019. We received the TWA authorization on June 27, 2023. And as mentioned previously, we're waiting on the final TWA permit. In terms of deed requirements by county and NJDEP, deeds were perfected for easements and land rights to both the county and the NJDEP as required in accordance with the county site plan approval and the NJDEP approvals. So with these approvals in hand, we are nearing the final stages of preparation. We are mindful of the concern raised by the community. In the past, we remain committed to ensuring that this project integrates harmoniously with the surrounding area. We believe it will serve as a positive addition to the township and have worked diligently to overcome delays and keep the project moving forward. So in light of the progress made and the external factors that have caused, the external factors that we're waiting on, that have caused some delays, we respectfully request the board's approval for a single one-year extension. This will allow us the necessary time to finalize the developer agreement, post the required bonds, obtain the remaining approvals, and enable us to effectuate the subdivision, which altogether will allow us to move forward with the construction thereafter.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cohen, and thank you, Mr. Chircha, for your testimony this evening. And, Mr. Cohen, your testimony was well laid out, and it also is in line with Mr. Jennings', Ms. Jennings' memo that was presented to the board members. So thank you for that. Just a couple of comments, Mr. Chircha. Thank you again for providing Ms. Bailey, the township attorney, with the two documents concerning the assignment of the original application and providing the updates for the required disclosures. Ms. Bailey is in the process of reviewing the documentation which was provided to her today by you, but those documents will have no impact on the extension we're about to speak to this evening. With that, I'd like to turn it over to my board members to ask if they have any questions of Mr. Chircha or Mr. Cohen.
I have a couple of questions. Excuse me, more directed at Lou, Mr. Lamontina. Mr. Chircha referenced that he is not coming this evening for any amendment or change to the existing agreement. But when we lay that comment over the recent fourth round that was released, by granting this extension, do we open up ourselves to having this renegotiated based on, you know, the perceived requirements that the township is going to face? Or, you know?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that would open to renegotiation. This is an accepted project, it's part of a third round approval from the courts. I don't know if council wants to require that, but I think this essentially is, let's call it yes of his news, that this is done, and it only has been pro forma for a one-year extension. I don't think it affects in any way the affordable housing obligation. Conversely, if you declined it and the project fell apart, then that'd be a whole new set of issues which would cause havoc.
Certainly, if the developer chose to withdraw their application, it starts anew.
Yeah, I want to make a point, I'm also not a affordable house council for the township, so I don't want to speak out of turn. I know Mr. Lyden's firm is the planner, and township council is handling affordable housing. Ms. Bailey knows all about this application, we've been in communication by email, the chairman and myself, and there's no issue that she has with the extension. The only issue left is, again, developers' agreements, which, again, is setting forth what occurred two years ago.
So that's my next question. So, you know, this Treatment Works approval, the TWA, sounds like it's with Bergen County or, you know, with an agency outside of the town. But the bond and the developers' agreement seem like they reside within our control. Do we know why it's taking this long to develop these numbers and create disagreements? Are we obligated as a municipality to provide this information, you know, on a timely basis? Or does it take this long typically?
Yeah, I couldn't speak to how long it takes. Noting the first page of, first line of the second page of the October 11th letter, that the township didn't provide the draft agreements until the township didn't provide the draft agreements until August of twenty twenty-four. I have no idea why. Considering this was approved initially in February of twenty twenty-two and then in December, that would appear to be a long period of time, not assuming that it isn't where. Perhaps, again, council might know why there was a delay, but again, it's not this all, it's not my office's house. By the way, council, we should mark the October eleventh letter as an application to one that directly sort of confirms, is this a writing of what Mr. Cohen did? So, to answer your question, so that's a moment. I don't know why it took so long.
The developers' agreement, would that come from either our affordable housing representative? Or the township attorney?
And just to be clear, we do have, the drafts have gone back and forth, so it's at this point, we are moving forward with it. We did get it from Ms. Bailey. I think we said October, excuse me, August of twenty this year. We've provided comments a few weeks after that, so I don't think we provided any substantial changes. You'd have to ask Ms. Bailey what her opinion is on that, but I don't, from our perspective, we didn't make any substantial changes. And so now we're waiting to hear back from her. And hopefully, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where it is in her pipeline, but I'm hopeful we'll hear back shortly from her.
Certainly. Is there anything you need from the township other than the agreement that's holding up any of your approvals?
We need the bond estimates as well.
Okay.
And that's my purview, and I am currently working on that. Had several conversations with Mr. Cohen, so we are in the process of finalizing that. I agree with the statements offered by Mr. Cohen as far as the timetable. So that should be provided within a week. It's all for, it's all pretty standard stuff. There were some sort of recent changes in the municipal land use law relative to bonding of these types of improvements, most of which, in this instance, for this application are private site improvements. So there is really very little, if any, municipal site improvements. So it's really just a matter of establishing reasonable inspection fees for the project. In response to Mr. Almond's question, the T W A is a Treatment Works application, formally referred to as a sewer extension permit. That is a D E P approval. So those take time. So there was a lag between the receipt of the amended approval from this board December seventh, twenty-two adopted. I think it took a little while for the applicant to make those applications, and then that just kind of everything snowballs from there. So there was no no impetus for the town professionals to take action until we knew that the applicant was serious about pursuing the project. So that only happened sometime, would you say, mid twenty-four, something like that, when those applications were actually filed to get the sewer, because there are large fees associated with those applications. So that's perhaps one of the one of the issues, but my understanding obviously is that those fees have now been paid and the applications are currently under review. So I believe the the T W I, I would expect would be issued probably no later than mid-November. So as the applicant stated, there's a certification on the subdivision plaque that says all conditions of approval have been satisfied. I don't have the literal certification, but generally, I have to certify as the board's engineer that everything required by the resolution of approval, the township code, has been satisfied. So these are issues that are outstanding, so I'm not able to sign until everything is in place. But I believe the applicant is moving, you know, as necessary, and I don't see any reason for the board to object to the requested extension.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other comments from my fellow board members?
Mr. Cohen, can you just give us a a timeframe, considering that the extension is approved? As far as this project from when you anticipated beginning and when it will be concluded?
Sure. So my understanding is the land use law allows us to request up to three one-year extensions. We don't plan on requesting another extension. Our timetable is, if we have the I'll give you the best-case scenario. We get the developer agreement, bond estimates, we'll proceed to post the bonds and execute the agreement you know, as soon as we can. Once the T W A permit comes through, I believe Mr. Azalina is on copy with all his communications with the D E P, so we'll proceed, once we receive that, we'll proceed to request the subdivision plaque to be signed. Once that's signed, we can get it effectuated with the county that actually perfect the subdivision. That will allow us to submit for permits for construction. So usually it takes, I think, the building department has twenty-one to twenty-eight days to respond to a permit request. Sometimes there's some modifications that you have to change on the plans, call it two months, start to finish. So in best-case scenario, we submit the permit request mid-January. We get the permits by mid-March, hopefully, and once the snow subsides, we will hopefully break ground. There are a couple of things that we might be able to do in advance of that. For example, clearing the lot requires a separate permit from the D P W. It's not under the purview of the building department. So if we get that permit issued, we could, we could start, get a head start there if the weather permitting. But in order to get that, we still have to sign the developer agreement, because the land clearing is part of this approval. So before we really touch, you know, touch the soil, we have to you know, cross our teeth at the eyes, you know, those things. So best-case scenario, we'll start early Q two, twenty-six, like Q one, twenty-six, sorry, twenty-five, twenty-five. Yeah, we don't plan on requesting a second extension.
And once you start, as far as completion of the project?
Yeah, these, these, these projects, depending on the supply chain issues and labor availability, range from say, it would be a miracle to do it in twelve months, realistic eighteen-ish months, and you know, delays could be twenty-four months, but it hoping to be around the eighteen-month range, basically.
Thank you.
And then a single-family home would happen in parallel. Obviously, building a single-family home is significantly faster than just being doing multifamily.
Understood. Thank you.
And any further comments from my fellow board members? None? So do I have a motion to open up public comments on this extension?
Motion to open. Second.
One in favor? Grace, anyone in the audience or on Zoom that would like to make a comment on this extension?
I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you, Grace. Do I have a motion to close the public comments portion?
So moved. Second.
One in favor? So do I have a motion to approve the one-year extension for this application?
I'll make the motion to approve the one-year extension. Second.
Roll call, Grace?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Palito?
Yes.
Mr. Toul?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes.
Councilman Almond?
Yes.
Chairman Sabino?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Cohen, Ms. Chara, your extension is approved for one year. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good question, council. Do you see need to recite all the backs in the resolution? I just can give you a very simple resolution. Statute, statute, you apply, subdue.
Can I see a draft before I?
Sure.
Yeah.
If you want to pull what you have, just have me where it should incorporate the dates in that.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that makes sense.
Do you have my email address?
Yes, I do, because I sent these, yeah.
My best chance to meet you.
Sure, I appreciate it. When is the next meeting? Two weeks. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On to the next item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the Bergen County Municipal Stormwater Control Ordinance. To give a little bit of background, the town had hired or the town needed to update its stormwater management control ordinance. The township then went ahead and hired a consulting firm called Stormwater Compliance Solutions to draft the ordinance for the board. Since it's part of the land use ordinances for the town, the reason, that's the reason why it's coming before this planning board for review and approval. Hopefully, everyone has read the updated the updated ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen. Unfortunately, the town administrator could not be here this evening, but I did receive a letter from, from Mr. Burgess's office today that the updated or the draft ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen is in compliance with our, with our master plan. Before I open up the this agenda item for comments of my fellow board members, Mr. Lyden, do you have anything to add to what I've just mentioned as part of my comments on the draft ordinance?
No, Mr. Chairman, that did it in a nutshell. We do believe this ordinance is one that the township is kind of required to adopt based on D E P regulations, and we do find it to be consistent with the Washington Township Master Plan Report of two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Lyden. And Paul, do you have any comments? I know you and I went went back and forth on some calls concerning this ordinance, but anything you can add?
I'll agree with Mr. Lyden that this is, in fact, a state law for major development. It's the threshold. So basically, we had an existing ordinance that is now rescinded and replaced by this ordinance, which takes into account the recently adopted amendments to the state stormwater management regulations or the inland flood protection rules where you have to extrapolate precipitation values into the, into the next century.
But something engineers love to do.
Yes, so at least they've given you some guidelines. There are two models that a town can adopt. There is the short form, which is what we are adopting here based on the recommendation of the, the township has a stormwater management consultant that prepared the draft document that you're looking at. So this is identical to the short-form state model. There's a longer-form model that's, you know, approximately forty to fifty pages that has all the text that's incorporated in the stormwater subchapter seven, colon, eight regulation that all those links are referenced in this model ordinance. Quite honestly, the people that would be most impacted by this ordinance are engineers that are already familiar with the ordinance, so they would know what you have to do for a major development, which is in this town, one acre or more of land disturbance, and then there are other thresholds that are triggered by motor vehicle surface coverage and impervious surface coverage of a quarter acre or more. So typically, the, the applications that we're seeing these days do not trigger that those rules, you know, only, only the larger developments would. So as far as its adoption or recommendation for approval to the mayor and council, I recommend that we recommend our approval for this ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Paul. Any comments from the board members before I open up the public comments?
How does this impact pending applications or approved applications that have not started? So we just had Franklin Court. We have Viviana, our two larger ones. So if, once this is adopted, if it's adopted by the council, are they held to this level of you know, enforcements or regulation or?
For the two projects cited, Franklin Court, definitely, you know, they have all their stormwater approvals already. Viviano, they that's a very, very, very gray area. I couldn't tell you what's going to happen there. It's it's in the courts right now, and I think that's going to decide some things as far as what standards apply.
Okay.
That's the best answer I can give you at this time. I'm not part of that court process. I just am aware that it's, it's there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank, thank you, Paul. Any further comments? None? Okay, do I have a motion to open public comments concerning the draft stormwater control ordinance?
I'll circulate.
One in favor? Grace, anyone on Zoom or in the audience who would like to, who'd like to comment on this draft ordinance?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close public comments?
So moved. Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the draft ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Grace?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Palito?
Yes.
Mr. Toul?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes.
Councilman Almond?
Yes.
Chairman Sabino?
Yes. So the ordinance is approved, and Grace, you will prepare a document for forwarding this ordinance to to Mark and to Susan for presentation at the next mayor and council meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Sabino, Chairman Sabino, may I have the Burgess letter be included in that information that's passed along to the council and to Mr. DeCarlo?
Yep.
Thank you.
Grace, mark that as an exhibit? Okay. All right, next agenda item is approval of the minutes from October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have any comments on those minutes? None? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Grace, roll call?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Toul?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes.
Councilman Almond?
Yes.
Chairman Sabino?
Yes. Okay, the minutes are approved. Last item, any board member have anything they would like to share with the board? Comments, thoughts, epiphanies?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a request.
Yes?
So regarding seven eighty-one Van Emborg, which is the top seat of this application, the board may recall the, the application, Large Home on Van Emborg Avenue.
Yep, yep.
So the plan, as approved, stated seventeen trees were going to be removed. There was some confusion with respect to the actual number of trees. Two permits were issued by the zoning officer. The first one said three trees, the second one said twenty trees. The number matched my report, but my report had a typo in it that actually said in one section, the applicant proposes to remove twenty-five trees, which was his original proposal. Actually, if you, if you recall, he submitted plans that showed him clear-cutting all the trees on the property. Then there was some discussion with their design team about preserving the large hemlocks along the suburbly property line. Then there was some discussion with their design team about preserving the large hemlocks along the southerly property line. So those were agreed to, to remain and they still remain. So tree operations commenced. So before the tree operations commenced, the applicant approached me and said, I want to take down these other, four other trees. I said, well, you can't do that until, I discuss it with the, with the full board. So that's what I'm doing now. So one of the trees, I see no, no issues with it. It was dead or dying at, at the time, it was along the northerly boundary. That, that tree should have been designated for removal as part of the original application. It didn't make it to, to the plans. Then there were two other trees along the easterly property line that, you know, appear to be healthy. I thought the neighbor to, to the east would want to see them preserved. But Mr. Topsedis met with that homeowner, got some correspondence from him indicating that he had no objection to, to the removal of, of the two trees along the easterly boundary. So then the fourth tree that I'm talking about is a large 24-inch fir tree at the front of the property, what would be the southwest corner of the property. It's, talking to the, to the tree removal expert, it's, it's in fair condition. It, it kind of looks awkward. It, it has no limbs on, on the lower section of, of the thing. It's all branches on, on the top. So I told him for the time being to, to save that tree as well as the, what is a, I forget the species of the tree, there's a deciduous tree at, at the rear of the, along the easterly property line that, that's still there. So I told him to hold off on the removal of those trees. So the applicant is proposing more than the two-for-one replacement required under the ordinance. So I just want to see if the board is okay with me authorizing as a field change the, the removal of the, the two remaining trees.
Any comments, any comments to the board members?
I spoke it to Michael Olman as, as an adjoining property owner. He's indicated he has no objections. I'll let him speak for himself, obviously. But as part of the, you know, before telling Topsedis that this would be considered, I, I wanted to speak directly to, you know, the most impacted property owners. And that's, that's the situation.
Any comments from my fellow board members? I got no problem with, with two trees. As Paul mentioned, he's, he will be planting more than two to one. So I have no problem with Paul providing him with the guidance of cutting down those two trees. Any other thoughts? Comments?
Ordinarily, I'd say you have to come back to the board, but I'm sure there's language in this resolution that says it's up to Paul to approve the landscape plan and as a look back of the year. So I think as Paul says, he has the authority to agree to this field change. So I, I think that's fine without having to come back to the board.
Well, the resident, the easterly resident, was that the resident that came and testified before us about the water and stuff?
Yes, yes. And his, his issue was with the fence. And then I think the applicant then, so he was going to replace the fence anyway. So he kind of got what he wanted, but yeah, so that, that was the same resident.
In your opinion, if those trees, two trees coming down, would that have any impact on, on the water?
No, the drainage system on, on the property is, is proper. He's got, I think, nine seepage pits to, to control the runoff from, from the roof. The, the way the landscape will function, all the water will be contained on, on the property. So there'll be no, no impact to, to the neighbors, to, to the east or, or to the south.
Okay, thank you.
There's no further comments, I think, Paul. I think the guy who provided them is, they can cut down the two trees.
I'll let him know, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from, from the board?
Just, has the subcommittee met?
We had a preliminary meeting about, I think about two weeks ago. And the next meeting is scheduled for, give me one second, I'm looking at my calendar, for Friday, November 8th at nine o'clock. For Joe Burgess to present to the subcommittee members his preliminary, preliminary findings on phase one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did talk to Mr. Burgess about that at the office today. And he, he had provided the subcommittee with the schedule. I probably shouldn't say this, but he thinks he's, he thinks he's ahead of schedule. And he's pretty sure that the documents that he promised the committee would be out early next week. So well in advance of that November 8th meeting.
Okay. Then maybe what I'll, what I will do is I will reach out to Mr. Burgess to confirm that. And I'll speak to the mayor. The mayor has appointed the, the members of the advisory committee to see if he wants to push the meeting up. And then potentially have Mr. Burgess present the preliminary findings from phase one to the, to the planning board for their comments. So I will take that as an action item once I get back to the state. Thank you, Mr. Lyden.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? None, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
All right, everyone, thank you for calling in. And it's 2:30 or actually 2:36 AM here in, in, in Poland. So I think I need to get some sleep before I need to go to my client at eight o'clock in the morning, so.
Bring back some vodka.
With some pierogi and kivata. All right, everyone, thank you.
All right.